... flag of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and justiciable.
Um, okay. Hello, everybody. Um, online we have Jennifer Sullivan, Judith Gibson Okenef, sorry if I totally butchered that, Annie Jordan Tamassek, Sarah Ludlam, and Nicole Fox. And I think that's it online. Um, board members, we have Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, Rich Hewlett, and Jessica Van Orte, and I am Kristin Powers. And we have Devon Neary, Julie Mack, Frank Nelson, John Sabatka, and Luke Kravitz. And I think that's it.
Great.
Thanks.
A few additions to the agenda?
Uh, yes. So, uh, we have to address, well, in the road foreman's report, we have to, I wanted to talk also about the equipment grant, and I didn't add that on, but we should talk about that. Um, we have to do the reappointment form within the emergency management director's report. Uh, for old or unfinished business, I wanted to address a couple of items, um, with the highway department. And for new business, there's been a request, um, for the town green, to use the town green this coming weekend, and also a request to advertise an event at the Meadowey Community School. Also, if you're all on board for it, if time allows for tonight, we, the board should discuss in executive session, um, personnel items as well. So, if we're completely overloaded and it's super late, um, maybe not, but I think it's important, so. Those are the additions, and no deletions that I'm aware of. Anybody else have anything to add?
No, all my stuff will be in planning commission's report.
Okay, cool. Um, so the minutes that need to be approved are from October 18th.
Um, they look good to me. I'll move that we approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carried. Okay. Now we're on Devon and Nicole.
Yeah, um, I'll let Nicole start right off if she is ready.
Okay, great. Can you hear me okay?
We catch.
All right, great. So, uh, tonight is the final, um, presentation for the Polit pedestrian accessibility scoping study, and we are wrapping it up. Um, so tonight we're gonna talk about the preferred alternative and the study results. Um, the project was initiated with the, um, Rutland Regional Planning Commission in collaboration with the town, with the Polit, and V-Trans. Uh, the town hired Fussin' O'Neil to conduct a scoping study for the village center to improve pedestrian mobility and safety, following V-Trans project development process for project definition. Um, the project team included Devon Neary from the Rutland RPC as a municipal project manager, Pete Pochop from V-Trans as their project manager, John Malcolm and Jessica Van Orte from the Polit Select Board, as well as Jonas Rosenthal, the Polit zoning administrator. And we just, um, I'd like to acknowledge, um, Jonas's, um, recent passing, and, um, also express appreciation for his, um, assistance in, in bringing this project to where it is now. Uh, I'm Nicole Fox, I am the Fussin' O'Neil project manager, and our project engineer is Jake Fowler. So, the, um, this is the agenda for tonight's presentation, the preferred alternative and study result overview. Um, we're gonna run through the project development process, just like we have at the previous two meetings, very quickly. We're gonna talk about the preferred alternative, and then, um, talk about the next steps. So, um, this project follows the V-Trans project development process. The stage scoping is the project definition process, and then following this, the project will move into project design and construction. Uh, the steps of project definition include data collection, the local concerns meeting, where we, um, gather all your feedback on, um, on the problems that you were hoping to fix. From there, we developed a purpose and need statement that will guide the project, not only through the scoping process, but also through design and construction. From there, we developed alternatives. We came back for an alternative those presentation meeting to present those to the town, um, which pointed town, uh, the select board voted, um, on their preferred alternative. From there, we completed our scoping report, uh, and with the preferred alternative. Project schedule, we started this project back in October of last year. Uh, we held a local concerns meeting in December, the alternatives presentation meeting in April, the draft scoping report was submitted in June, and the final scoping report was accepted, uh, by V-Trans in September, and, um, was also, um, submitted to the town. Uh, this is just a general map showing, uh, the project area, which is outlined in black. It's the village center area and extending, uh, south down, uh, Vermont 30 to Sheldon's Market. The purpose and need statement that we developed, um, is the purpose of this project is to build, evaluate, and recommend proposed pedestrian access improvements that will increase the safety and visibility of pedestrians within the project corridor. And the need is lack of sidewalks and crosswalks to provide safe access between destinations. Oh, this is not advancing. You guys are, sorry, my apologies. I'm not sure why the slides are behind. All right, they're pitching up now, sorry. This is the map that I was referring to.
We actually see the purpose and need statement right now on our, our screen.
Okay, great. Um, so the lack of sidewalks and crosswalks to provide safe access between destinations, and vehicle speed on Vermont 30 combined with the limited side distance that makes crossing We developed, uh, three alternatives, um, for every project. Through Vermont process, there's always a no-build alternative, um, and given that there was incredible consensus from the very beginning on this project from the town, our two build alternatives were actually very similar, um, and the only difference was whether or not the sidewalk extended all the way south to Sheldon's Market. Uh, the town selected the full version of the sidewalk that extends all the way to Sheldon's as their preferred alternative. We, uh, this is the same evaluation matrix that we brought to the alternatives presentation meeting, which provided, um, the ability to compare not only the no-build in the two alternatives, but each one also with the different costs associated with concrete versus asphalt So, alternative three, the expanded sidewalk alternative, includes the following: sidewalks on Vermont 30 from Sheldon's Market to the post office, including sidewalk on both sides of the bridge. On Vermont 33, the sidewalk extends from the intersection of Vermont 30 to the church parking lot. On School Street, the sidewalk extends from Vermont 30 all the way to the library. There are crosswalks on Vermont 30, um, at the end of the bridge in the intersection with School Street over towards, um, Vermont 133, and also, um, where there is a need to cross, um, the sidewalk from one side to the other further south. One is at the location where the existing sidewalk, the deteriorated existing sidewalk, uh, switches sides, and then there's another location, um, just, just north of Sheldon's, where we need to cross again. Each one of these crossings of Vermont 30, we recommended, including rapid flash and beacons for those which are, um, triggered by, um, a pedestrian pushing a button when they're present. And there are also crosswalks on Church Street, one, um, across Church Street right at the intersection, and then another one, um, in front of the Polit Community Church to get, um, pedestrians over to the parking lot. So, the alternative also includes the concrete sidewalk with granite curb. It reduces the width of the pavement on the bridge, um, which will not only provide, um, safe pedestrian refuge, but it should also help to calm traffic speeds. It will maintain the, the current advisory speed of 20 miles an hour. Um, it does, we did also recommend replacing the current signs that you have that are sort of the standard yellow with fluorescent signs. However, uh, those also have, um, only limited, um, effectiveness, so we actually think that the sidewalk and curb will actually do much more to help reduce travel speeds. Um, so, the estimated total project cost that include not only construction, but design, construction engineering, administrative, and just project manager costs, as well as a 5% per, per year inflation rate, um, given current conditions, felt important to include that. Um, and so the total estimated project costs are 2.45 million. That is a very large number, that is hard for, um, any town to have funding to construct. So, we broke the project out into, um, three separate distinct phases. Um, the first phase, which includes sidewalk on both sides of the bridge, the sidewalk on Church Street, the crosswalk across Vermont 33 at the end of the bridge with a rapid flash and beacon, as well as the crosswalk across Church Street at the church itself. The estimated project cost for this phase is $500,000, and the town has already secured a bike and ped grant from the state, so that is excellent news. We're very happy that, um, it's already been taken care of. So, phase two, and this is a larger project which could potentially be broken into two pieces if needed, uh, includes the sidewalk on Vermont 30 that extends south, um, from the intersection with Church Street down to where the existing sidewalk ends. And it includes sidewalk on School Street that goes all the way from the intersection to the library. Uh, the crosswalk across Vermont 30, also, again, we recommend a flashing beacon, um, and a crosswalk across, um, 133 at the intersection. This project, um, with the all inclusive cost is 1.23 million. And the last phase takes the sidewalk from the existing limit down to Sheldon's Market, includes one more crosswalk with flashing beacon, and the estimated cost for this This is an overview of, uh, the preferred alternative. The, um, red square on the left side of the screen is Sheldon's Market. Um, you can see the intersection and Max Market, the bridge, um, and the sidewalk that goes to the, both the town hall, and then further on down to the library. Uh, this is what it looks like in closer view, starting at Sheldon's. It extends on the, um, east side of the road, one property, and then crosses over. The reason why we, um, needed to cross over was for, um, minimizing impacts to, um, the adjacent properties, um, and additional scope impacts needed to construct. The sidewalk continue, after it crosses over, it continues on, uh, the west side of Vermont 30, it heads north. This is the area with the crosswalk where, um, the existing sidewalk changes sides, uh, right at the end of the retaining wall, on, um, the east side. This is the, uh, intersection, and, uh, at the last meeting, we received a comment that we had shown a crosswalk in a spot that was a little hard to see, so we did shift it out. So, hopefully, this limited side distance that's available because of the, the bridge rail, um, will not affect the pedestrians. And then this is just showing the sidewalk that goes to the town hall, uh, and then over back to the accessible entrance at the rear of the library. And with that, uh, that concludes, um, our presentation of the project, and we're happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
I've got a question.
Okay.
Uh, do you have a list of contractors that would, that would bid on those jobs?
So, um, yeah, we're, we'll, for the, at least the part that was awarded a grant, we'll go through a design phase, and the town can choose to either put that out, out to bid, or V-Trans has an at the ready list. Um, and then from there, when we do go out to bid for construction, it will have to be, um, a competitive bid process. So, um, we have a pretty broad array of contractors we've worked with on similar projects. We can certainly note that they get it, but, um, in terms of a special list that it gets sent to, we typically just send it through the business portal.
And it would get to those contractors that would be interested in a project like this.
But the town, if they have anyone in mind, can absolutely make sure they get a copy of that bid so they can bid on it, or the, or the, sort of the proposal so they can bid on it. Um, that's completely acceptable, yeah. And, um, I just wanna know, it's, this, this, uh, process is a little bit topsy-turvy 'cause we secured funds for the alternative before we even finished the scoping study, which is super rare and awesome, that's great for the town. Um, and like Nicole said, when we had sort of prepared that grant, that was in the height of inflation, things were popping off, and we were really concerned that if we didn't overinflate the number, that we'd leave the town shorthanded. So, that being said, you know, the project is completely scoped, and if we, when we actually get the funds and we start developing the scope of this project, if the original scope can be expanded with those funds, if we can spread that dollar further, we absolutely will try to do that. Luckily, since we have the scoping study, we have that ability, 'cause it's been fully scoped, and we've done all the historical and cultural assessment, resource assessment. Um, so I do wanna know, it's, there's potential, that 500K from the state could go further than what we had anticipated. We were just being super conservative because of a couple factors in town. Um, but hopefully, it could go further, maybe down School Street or 30.
Oh. Well, we'll get right back into Zoom. Don't worry about that. I'm gonna eject you. Oh.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions?
Um, I have a question. I'm curious whether you have to consult with, uh, like, V-Trans on the sidewalk that you discussed over the bridge, on both sides of the bridge? Because I know with the turning on the Church Street, turning off from 133, um, truck traffic and everything else needs the full width of that bridge in some cases, or, um, and also, is V-Trans okay with putting sidewalks on each side of the bridge? Because I know in the winter, when they plow it, they plow right out to the, right out to the edge of the bridge, so they can leave their wings down and stuff. So if they don't, they're just gonna fill the sidewalk full of snow, and it won't be usable for anyone then.
So, V-Trans has reviewed and weighed in on all aspects of this project, including the final report, um, so they are aware of the dimensions. And, uh, Nicole's team at Fussin' O'Neil did do some turning radius analysis and found it was acceptable for the, um, you know, the, the length rating for a typical federal highway, um, highway. So, um, we're pretty confident that V-Trans, at this point, has given us the okay to keep going, um, so we don't anticipate any issues. And that's exactly why we go through a scoping study, because if you just try to jack a, set a sidewalk on state highway, they'd be like, no, what are you doing? You know, so, yeah, that's a good point. And winter maintenance is gonna be, you know, something that, um, that during the design will have to be a consideration.
All right.
Well, what are the materials for the sidewalk and the curb?
Yeah, so Nicole had stated it will be a concrete sidewalk with granite curbing, um, just because it is a state highway, and that's the most, um, you know, it's the strongest material for that, that, where, of course.
Anything else? Nobody has any more questions? I guess we're all set. Appreciate it very much, you coming down.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I don't know what happened.
Nicole is here on my, this screen, you can-
Everybody else is switching, but-
Say hello and goodbye.
Can you reengage this thing?
Well, I could, but we're, we don't really need to, 'cause it belongs to Devon, so-
She did a good job.
And he's gonna be departing us, so-
Oh, she did a good job.
Yeah, I know. Oh, I don't know, for sure.
Thank you, Nicole.
Nicole, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Yes.
Appreciate you bringing down the extra equipment to put this on.
Sure, yeah. And we'll be back down again once we start this project, 'cause we'll be likely managing it for you guys.
Um, here, let me help you out.
Don't forget your brand name.
Thanks. Yes, finally.
Any announcements tonight? Kristin, or?
Um, just that we are continuing to advertise and seek applicants for the road foreman, as well as the zoning administrator.
Okay. So we have no zoning administrator's report, do we? And the planning commission has a report?
Yes, we do have a report. Let me pull it up and give it to you. I sent this out just a little while ago, so you should have it in your inboxes. All right, the planning commission met last Monday, October 24. We discussed, we spent considerable time discussing the vacancy in the zoning administrator position and how to fill it. Um, there was some debate about whether a planning commission member could, under the statute, also be the ZA. Um, I volunteered to contact VLCT and get an answer to that question, and to contact Rutland Regional Planning Commission to see if they have any potential candidates in, in mind. John, Harley, and Frank are contacting Castleton, I think I got these towns right, Castleton, Middletown Springs, and Rupert, to see if they have any leads. We agree that the position needs to be filled at least temporarily with all possible speed, because there are permits that need to be processed. And I actually just spoke with Julie about that as well. Um, for the rest of the meeting, we worked on the enhanced energy plan, we made a few final edits. It's now ready to get a new map, inserted some statistics, updated, and begin the approval process. Um, Jessica will contact Barbara at Rutland Regional Planning Commission to get her help in the necessary updates due to recent changes at the state level. So, since I wrote this report, I have a few additional updates. Um, we do have a couple potential leads on, um, zoning administrator candidates, and the planning commission may end up needing to warn a special meeting in order to, um, consider these candidates and then, um, present, and present options to the select board-
Okay.
-so that we can move forward on this quickly. Um, I also heard from Barbara at Rutland Regional Planning Commission about the, um, about the enhanced energy plan, and unfortunately, they also had, um, a sudden passing in their person who does the maps. So, they will not be able to help us with updating the maps in quite the way that we would need. Also, um, Barbara suggested that we might want to, instead of trying to update all of our, the enhanced energy plan, which has been in the progress for like, three years now, um, instead of updating it to the new 2022, ah, what's the name of it? The state has a new energy plan, but the state has not yet issued the full guidance on how to do it. So, she's thinking, maybe since we've been working on it so long, we could just get it grandfathered in for the previous rules. And I hope we can do that, because we'd just like to have it there. And once we have it in place and it's been approved, we get substantial deference with the PUC about, um, energy projects citing in our town. So, that's getting close to the end. Um, any questions about either of those things?
Frank?
I stopped off at Castleton, and they're just floating out, they just were floating out their ad for their zoning administrator, and they gave Jonas 17 hours.
Mm-hmm.
We got four, and I says, well, you have somebody in mind that's, do your ads, then they could get additional hours by doing what the same thing Jonas did. And so that's in their, that B is in their bonnet, that, that thought. And, um, um, and I said, just, hey, go out on the website and get ahold of the town clerk, as far as getting ahold of you or anybody, you know, to discuss them.
Yeah, sure, thank you. Yeah, and, um, Harley also had a lead from Rupert, so, we have, and there may be another lead here in Polit as well. Did you have any luck, John?
Uh, I went on the website for Middletown Springs, and there is no zoning officer listed whatsoever.
Okay, perhaps they don't have zoning.
They don't have zoning.
Okay.
They don't have zoning in Middletown.
See, that's what I thought.
Okay, yeah, 'cause we knew that, we, I knew off the top of my head that Danby doesn't have zoning, and Wells doesn't have zoning, so we're trying to figure out which other neighboring towns had zoning.
Yeah, and I did see your email today. I wasn't able to respond.
Yeah, it was kind of late, so we never-
And that's great, I hope you guys can find somebody. I will tell you, the Regional Planning Commission is likely going to be updating their bylaws for a shared services agreement, because we're seeing the writing on the wall that small communities can't necessarily sustain a zoning administrator, so, um, if we see that across the region, we will likely try to hire somebody on and help provide that service, but-
Yeah.
-we're a ways away, and, you know-
Okay.
-locally, it can be done whenever possible, so-
It's good to know that that's in the works.
Yes, absolutely. All right, take care, guys, thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Frank?
Castleton has their town manager as the emeritus zoning administrator.
Okay.
They were able to, to do that, so, management apparently can step in and-
Yeah, and I did, I did, I also, my other update is I contacted VLCT, and they let me know about what the statute says. The only people who are already involved in town government, who are totally barred from being the ZA, are anybody who's on the development review board. Anybody on the DRB cannot also be the zoning administrator. It is possible, according to the lawyers at VLCT, for someone who is on the planning commission or the select board to serve in that role. Um, however, there is a bit of a conflict of interest there, and they would then have to recuse themselves for anything involving the zoning administrator. So, that would be a possibility for a stopgap, but it's probably better for us to event, to get someone for long term who is not involved, in my mind, with the planning commission or the select board.
I did get a question. What should someone do currently who's interested in submitting a building permit? Do we have a, if somebody wants to do that?
Well, right now-
I didn't know the answer yet, so-
We don't, I don't think we have an answer right now.
All right, we don't have an answer at this, I don't have an answer at this time, so we'll have to-
How many are active? How many are basically stuffy, was working on? Has anybody dug in and seen what?
Yes, there were, um, there were two people who had- Yes, there were, there were two people who had left voicemail messages, and Julie has gone ahead and quick called both of them back to let them know what's going on. So, that's, as far as that's going, yeah, that's the only thing that seemed to be in the works that we know of.
So, there's not a, I guess, my, I guess what I'm asking is, is there any sort of guidance on what the backup plan is from BLCT, or who it defaults to?
It doesn't really default to anyone.
Okay. So, for now, I can just let, I just got one email, and so I can let them know to just-
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I would think that within the week, we can probably have somebody appointed, at least in a temporary position.
Okay.
I mean, even if it's just like one of us has to jump in for a week or two, but since we do have several leads, I, I think we'll be able to get someone pretty soon.
Okay.
That's good.
If that's, if that seems all right with all-
I'm very pleased that we have several leads, because before, when, when, when our last zoning administrator got sick, we had nobody.
Mm-hmm.
We were scrambling hard and finally talked Jonas into it.
Good.
That's very positive news. Okay. Road foreman's report.
Yeah, so paving is gonna start on Buttons Falls Road tomorrow.
Yeah, I saw them measuring it today when I drove up there, they're running the little wheel along.
Marking the center.
Yep, mm-hmm.
Yeah, so they're gonna start that tomorrow, and they're also gonna do, there's three culvert crossings on 153 that we're gonna pave over. There's also a culvert crossing on New Street in front of Patty Kramer's and Rhonda's house, they're gonna finish, and also where the road is settling over in West Paulette by the old dump, they're gonna shim that, so. And one more, they're also gonna shim the box culvert on North Paulette Road that's settled, so.
Okay. That's all good.
Mm-hmm.
What did we learn about winter salt?
So, we put that out to three different companies, Cargill, American, and Apalachee, and two of them got back to us. Apalachee delivered is ninety-two dollars a ton, and American, which is out of Fort Anne, that can be delivered eighty-five plus a fuel surcharge, which, you know, that could be anywhere, I mean, the fuel surcharge now is thirty-seven percent.
Thirty-seven is what they, is that, that's a fuel charge on the trucking or the loading?
It's on the trucking.
On the truck.
It's on the transportation, which in this case, so, we can pick it up if we choose to in Fort Anne for seventy dollars a ton.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, the base rate delivered is eighty-five plus a fuel surcharge. And we have not heard back from Cargill.
Okay.
So, the first one is just delivered? We could pick that up?
Yeah, that's, that's down Albany.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we want to go pick that up.
Right, and the second one is out of Fort Anne, which is twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes away. So, that's within reach. I just, you know, I don't know if we can afford to send the guys out there, depending on the weather.
Thirteen in that western star, you can't even see it.
Yeah.
But those trucks registered, they have here now.
The ninety-two dollars, you know, they're probably both gonna be in that range, delivered. And we can wait to hear from Cargill.
Do you think it's worth it for us to just draw some ourselves, or?
Sure, I think so. I mean, they can find, I would think they shouldn't have any trouble finding a day to, to run a load, and-
Yeah.
They're never gonna really need two loads the same day, you know? They've got a, a place to pile it and store it inside in West Paulette, and the same over here in Paulette.
'Cause we're, it'd be like two loads to, to one, basically, right? A tractor trailer load's gonna be thirty-tonish, and we haul fourteen or so, or-
And that's something that, you know, I could talk to those guys about it as well.
I'm just, just trying to do the difference.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're gonna, they'll haul close to twenty ton, and a tractor trailer's gonna bring in thirty-two, thirty-three ton.
They're probably not legal at twenty, are they?
Hmm, in that range, they're not too far off, I don't know.
No, 'cause I can only put thirteen in that western star.
You have any permits?
Fifty-three. You get fifty-three thousand. So, but even so, that's still, I mean, by the time you put thirty-seven percent fuel charge on eighty-five bucks, we can, we can drop for a hundred and fifty bucks a load or something like that, probably all right, because it's about two-hour turnaround, I would think.
And we get it when we want it and when we need it.
And get it, right.
I mean, I think that's within reach.
I, it seems-
As long as they, you know, if they see a storm coming-
Right.
You know, make sure the sheds are full.
Right. Yep, stay on, don't even bother going till nine o'clock.
And if we do get behind, we can have a load delivered.
Because there's nothing now, right? That's what-
Yeah, they, they do need some, which-
In Paulette, I know there's nothing, but-
Just have to kind of watch.
Very soon.
Mm-hmm.
Watch the pile in case a rail strike, that's the only thing we gotta be concerned about.
But with American, they're all right either way. We can deliver, we can get some delivered, or we can go get some. And he guaranteed, also guaranteed salt throughout the season, which, I didn't ask that question to Apalachee, but I know there's potential for a salt shortage.
Right, depending on the rail strike. What, where did we get it from last year?
Fort Anne, American.
American rock salt, okay. Frank?
I was bringing up the rail strike, they were talking like thirty days, there was a thing on the news about it in the towns of Vermont that they didn't have salt yet, and they were gonna be piling it up in case of that, so that's, they're, they're gonna guarantee it, even if there's a rail strike that they're familiar with, probably.
I do have that in writing.
Yeah, 'cause that, that just has to come out of Albany, it could come in Albany and the barges.
Yeah. Yeah, Apalachee, I believe, comes in on the barges, American, at least in Fort Anne, comes in by rail.
Yeah. Okay, so, I guess we'll just, just buy it as needed and-
I think so.
Try and stay, keep every, everything full, just as quick as the storm's over, go replenish. Do you think if we don't hire a road foreman, or that extra spot will be, we'll be able to cover that all right? That third snowplow guy, or?
I think, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to start advertising for, you know, laborer position as well as a foreman position, just so we can fill, fill that spot too. You know, maybe there's some folks that would be interested in coming to work for the town, but don't want the, the foreman position. At this point, I think that it wouldn't be a bad idea to throw that in the, that line in the water as well.
I, I agree, I was kind of thinking that as well.
I mean, quite often in a, in a storm, we could even use four people-
Mm-hmm.
For a short term, so is there, is there some potential for part-time laborers still, or will help with the snowplow one too?
Yeah, there is, similar to like what we did last year. I mean, we did, that's how we got through last winter, so.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any other questions for the, the road?
Do you, uh, do you need a motion to decide on anything with salt, or you're just-
With that?
Do you need a motion to decide on-
To buy the rock salt, probably? Or?
Or actually, yes. Does someone wanna make a motion?
Wait, wait till the next meeting?
Yeah.
'Cause right now, we can get it if we want it, right? For seventy, just go pick it up for seventy.
Let me just talk with the guys about it and get on the same page with them and-
Okay. So, we'll discuss it at the next meeting again? Okay. Um, okay.
We know that we can go get it right now if we had to. We'll just all chat with them about it and put it playing together, see what they think about the time that they're gonna have, and I, I think that's within reach, it's not that far.
Any other questions for the road? Frank?
Also a rumor about the country running dry of diesel, you know, did you hear that one? So, that's another coin toss there, if anybody can commit to that angle too, if they need it.
If they do, we won't be the only ones out of it.
Okay.
There'll be more problems than, than our town trucks on the road, I'll tell you that, so.
We won't need to plow the roads if people can't buy gas or fuel.
Is there anything from the assessors?
Um, well, so, also for the roads, the equipment grant, so, I can't find a piece of paper that I had, but there was the, so we were awarded funding for the leaf blower, we were waitlisted.
Right.
So, we purchased the leaf blower, so we were awarded funding. However, there was a list of other potential pieces that maybe I thought we, it would be worth it to see if we might be interested in any of them, and then we could ask the Rutland Regional Planning Commission if we could go ahead and purchase one of those other pieces, since we were already awarded the funding. So, we were awarded fifty-six hundred dollars, and I believe it was something like a twelve-hundred-dollar match, or around a thousand dollars. So, do you remember off the top of your head what those pieces were? I am not, but the one that we were-
I do know the piece, yeah.
We were, looked at the list and thought about kind of what we might be able to benefit from, and one of them was like a hay bale chopper, something like that?
Mulch or mulch and hay.
Attachment for the tractor. So, it seemed like out of the list of approved pieces of equipment, that would be the best one, so I don't know what everybody thought about that, if it would be worth me reaching out to them, if we don't wanna do it, I mean, I don't know, I just think it's-
Is there a deadline?
Yes.
I was just thinking it'd be nice if, um, you had that list.
So, if we got this mulcher, what would we use it for?
Uh, when they do ditching projects, or, you know, they'll cut a bank back on the side of a road, they'll seed it and blow, you know, chop the hay and blow it on the-
They really had to run one of those.
Oh, right, okay.
The dirt.
Yeah.
It's like, help erosion and-
So, we were awarded fifty-six hundred, our match would be fourteen hundred, and we have to take delivery of the equipment by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. So, we have some time to think about it. I just don't want it to be one of those things that we just forget about, that I forget about.
Every time we do a project, we have to run a, oh, mulcher.
Right, yeah, so.
And again, I haven't, I haven't even gone there yet, I just wanted to make sure that I ran it past everybody here first, and then I could potentially reach out to Stephanie, and she could say, sorry, you know, it doesn't work that way. But I just wanted to, I think it can't hurt to ask.
It seems like it's worthwhile to ask if that's a possibility.
So, is everybody okay with me reaching out to her about that piece of equipment, and seeing if that could be something? Okay.
That sounds like a good, a good option.
I would do that and report back. And nothing from the assessors.
Town clerk's memo?
Um, so from Deb, there were three hundred and thirty early ballots submitted to date. The citizen that requested communication with, with regard to the service request from last meeting called to see if any contact had been made with the power company. You may have heard someone, heard from someone with regard to a meet and greet event on the town green. I recommended they contact Jessica and/or the board to find out the options. I know there is a protocol for the auditorium, but could not advise as to what the protocol was for the green. Have a good evening.
Who was supposed to reach out to the power company? Was that Bob?
Yes, and I drove around town three times, the third time being this morning, and every street light in town is on, so I guess I don't see what street light is out.
There, there isn't a street light in the location that she's talking about.
Okay, so we need more clarification.
Was it a request that they wanted their own street light out in front of their house?
No, the request was that there was a street lamp that was out, the bulb was out, so.
Three times I've drove around town at night, and one being this morning, at quarter to seven this morning, although it was still dark out, and every street-
You're being modest, we know you did it, you should meet up there and fill that light.
Every street light in town was still on this morning before, and I did the night after the meeting there, so. Even stopped and asked people.
I thought about it when I couldn't do tonight, and I'm looking up at all the-
I drove up and down Chicken Alley and Hill Street, hmm.
There was no street light out there, and I, I know why they wanted it, 'cause they were out there jumping the car, so.
Okay, I will reply to Deb on that.
So, we couldn't, we couldn't see, there was no street lights that we could see that were out, so she needs to give us a poll number.
Yes, yeah. Um, do you want to address the town green request now, or wait until later in the meeting? I have it.
We already have it under new business, so.
So, we will get to you.
Anything else from the town clerk? That's it? No questions, comments? Good. Julie, you're up.
Uh, I don't have a lot, just the two warrants, payroll is eight thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents, accounts payable sixteen thousand three forty-one fifty-one. Uh, the breakdown on that is general fund money is eleven thousand seven hundred twelve dollars seventy-four cents, highway nine thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars sixty-two cents, wastewater three thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars thirty-one cents. We did get our county level ARPA deposit, so the second deposit that we would get this fiscal year, um, net was one hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred fifty dollars and thirty-five cents. And then we also got the quarterly, um, class two and three state highway aid of twenty-five thousand two eighty-seven oh two. Both of those were in October. And then just the, the payroll warrant, two-three oh two-five, and accounts payable two-three oh two-six.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on any of that?
Um, I'll, I'll move that we approve these two warrants, two-three oh two-five and two-three oh two-six.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Emergency management, we have to reappoint?
Yes, you know, it's also a, um, let's see, so there was a report also. So, Jay and Bob attended the Vermont Emergency Preparedness Conference on September twenty-first in Killington. Bob Morleano attended the FBI Working Group meeting on September twenty-sixth at the Vermont Fire Academy in Pittsford. Bob and Jay attended the RRPC Emergency Management Meeting on September twenty-eighth virtually, and Bob attended the Homeland Security Working Group meeting on October fourteenth in Killington. Bob Morleano also renewed the town radio license, which will need to be renewed again in twenty-thirty-two. Wow, that lasts a lot for your calendars. Also need to do, I printed it out, oh, I put it on your spot there. So, yeah, so you have to reappoint the, um, Emergency Management Director Representative for the Rutland Regional-
Emergency Management Committee.
Yes, that's what I wrote, yes.
Reappointment form.
Yeah.
Guess we need to make a motion to keep that off.
Yes.
Somebody wanna make, oh, yeah, I passed it. Somebody wanna make a motion to appoint Bob as Emergency Management Director?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bob and I both said that, so he made the motion and I seconded it. There we go. Great.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Carried. Health officer. Jennifer, have anything for us tonight?
Um, all, the only town health officer activity, Bob and I revisited a trailer on one thirty-three- Um, all, the only town health officer activity, uh, Bob and I revisited a trailer on one thirty-three. Um, it was re-rented before things were completely fixed, so we'll be going back to follow up on that. Um, but it, there's nothing serious, um, as far as COVID. You may have heard that, um, Vermont has raised uh, the community level to medium, uh, from low, but that was only based on, um, a rise in COVID admissions to above ten per ten thousand Vermonters per day. Um, otherwise, the community level indicators are low in terms of the rate of COVID cases and the percent of hospital beds occupied by COVID patients. The volume of people going to the ER due to COVID-like symptoms is similar to this time in twenty twenty-one. And outbreaks and situations of concern, concern, excuse me, in long-term care corrections and health facilities remains significantly lower than in May twenty twenty-two. Uh, they also, uh, on the website, it says that while a seasonal increase in COVID infections and symptoms is expected, the new bivalent booster vaccines are effective at protecting people from getting seriously ill, being hospitalized, and dying. In terms of mask wearing, I think there is no change, it's really to be self-managed, whatever you feel most comfortable with. Any questions?
I'm good with that.
I think so.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wastewater facility. Friday at noon, right?
Friday at noon, we're meeting here, yeah, I'll send out an email reminder for that.
Right here. That'd be great, cause I probably forgot the other meeting the other night, but, so you sent me out the email again.
Is this, um?
This is with John Kiran and the, the funding.
Is this a, and this is an open meeting?
Um, no, it's a, no, we're just gonna, um, get some of us together to do, uh, it's called an initial self-assessment, and it's what we have to do to get him the info he needs in order to move ahead with looking for grant funding. So yeah, um, Mike and I are gonna meet with Julie and Jill, and with, and he'll meet with us. Took some doing to schedule this meeting.
Nice work.
Jill is a hard person to get hold of, I mean, to, to get, to make time. Yeah, to make time, she's very busy, is what I'm saying, yes.
So this message I got Friday from Jill, I have marked out the sewer laterals for the Little White Building to the left of the walking bridge, and following two properties to the right. They do all have sewer laterals, also, we also scanned all of the tire records, which I will send to you this afternoon, and I didn't get them yet, but that's a process that we're gonna work with you and try and cover them, because all the original records were all listed by the owner at the time, without having property identification numbers, so we're gonna work with Julie against that, that year's grant list and try and determine the property parcel numbers, so that we can get this all tied in, so. Kristen, could you send Bruce a email saying that he's marked, that it's marked out, and if there's any question, he can contact Jill? Probably leave a message at the sewage treatment plant, and she'll get ahold of him.
Can you say that one more time? Yes, I'd love to, but I just wanna, yeah.
Jill, Jill has marked out all the sewer laterals, including the one to his Little White Building.
And he has one.
So it is, it is indeed a tap, is in the sewer system awaiting his connection. And if he has any questions, he could, you know, call the sewer plant, leave a message, and, and Jill will get ahold of him, I think. She used to come down every Wednesday, I think is, is when she, she schedules her day to come down to do her inspection, so. And other than that, all the reports look good. Seems to be running smooth, um.
It's a good two weeks when it's running smooth.
Yeah, Aria seems to be doing well, um, taking over and
Mm-hmm.
and stuff, and the pumps, I guess, are all okay now that they got them all squared away, so I haven't heard any, any issues for a while. Facilities report.
Any word from Rudd?
No, but I know, I think they're coming this week to do some roofing, so I'll try and pin him down. But I'm sure that this is, this is a project that doesn't require as good of weather as roofing does, and I know he was running way behind on roofing. We've probably got a couple of weeks worth of roofing projects that he's gonna be working on there, so. But I'll, I'll try and see, get some kind of idea when he, he thinks he'll be able to take care of this. And other than that, we're pretty much, everything else seems to be all set, I see there was a, a bill for Eminem had to do something at the library, or? Just normal. Okay, do you have a school board report for us tonight, or?
I was reminded of my need to do that when I spoke to Kristen on entry to the building tonight.
So we'll, we'll expect it next. All right, uh, good, no, that's awesome, it's, it's good that we, it's good that we get that, though, thank you. Okay, older unfinished business, we have highway department uniforms.
What's happening with those?
I don't know, is it just to renew the contract, or?
Well, well, uh.
Bob, did you, did you mention something about talking to those guys?
I spoke, uh, to, I'm not sure both of them, or whether it was just, uh, Perry the other day, and, um, he suggested that they turn in their uniforms and just, we get, uh, buy them like some high-vis uh, shirts in, in place of them, but I, I can, I, I don't know if I got it down exactly what they were looking for, or, or consult with, with Dale also, so, um, but I think they're looking to do something different, I, I think they wanna get away from the dull green, uh, things, because, uh, in the summer, when they're working with the uniforms that blend in, they need to wear high-vis stuff on top, over the top of it, and it just makes it heavier in the summer to, to, and to remember to, when they jump out of a truck to put a vest on and that type of thing, so I think, what, what I got from Perry was he was looking to just switch to something and maybe purchase it, that type of thing.
So do something like give them a clothing allowance instead of having a uniform company? Provide them with some T-shirts and then a clothing allowance, or something like that?
Or at least provide them with a, a full change of, of, uh, high-vis, high-vis shirts, uh, T-shirts or something in place of the uniforms. Yeah, so we, we should.
Need to talk to them a little bit more and see, and see what they say, but, but looking at that, it looks like it's plenty of money for uniforms a year, huh?
No, and there's pre-set set up right now, so we do need to make sure that the, the former employee gets his return in.
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay, so we'll gather a little bit more information on that.
Right.
And move forward.
I don't know why I put that under old business, that's definitely something new, but.
Yeah, that's.
Uh.
Something we should discuss, so, definitely.
Yeah, so that'll be old business next time, but, um.
Road foreman advertising?
Yes, so I think that we need to revamp our approach to advertising for the position, as, um, up until today, the, there's been limited feedback.
Limited as in zero?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so anyhow, we went through the usual channels and did, you know, it's on the website and on, it, I think went out in the e-blast, I don't know if the e-blast has gone out yet, um, it went out to Front Porch Forum. It went out to, I think to the Two Papers, I requested to Deb that they went out to the Two Papers, um, and that was really it, and so I know that we were sort of hopeful that, you know, it, people would be like, oh my gosh, best job ever, let's apply, but I mean, it hasn't been that long, but I, I just think that it's worth thinking about how we might wanna get it out, get the word out a little bit further. I know that it's tough right now, and there's a lot of people are having trouble with staffing.
Yeah, I know at least two other towns are hiring for road foremen as well, so we probably have competition.
Sure, um, but it could be a really great role for somebody who's local, you know, and so I just, I think that it could be worth people thinking about putting our heads together, how we can get the word out more locally, um, and also if we wanna consider doing anything else online, you know, if we wanna put it up to like Indeed, or I don't know, I know we said that that's not so great, but I don't know if we wanna like print out flyers and put some flyers around, I know that's kind of, you know, where people might go, or if we can all do a better job of doing some word-of-mouth advertising, um, maybe we can ask, you know, use our resources like the library and see if we can put something up in the library, or think about some local places where a road foreman might hang out. I don't know.
At the post offices is always good.
Yeah, so. I'm just trying to get, get creative, um, I don't know where a road foreman might hang out, but.
Pump at Stewart, she's now saying, that you can run ads on the Stewart pump speakers.
I hate those pump speakers so much, I don't wanna be talked at while I gas up.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that.
Okay.
But what if it was me being like, hey?
We need a road foreman.
But one exception.
Maybe that wouldn't be the word.
All right.
Anyway, so I think, though, that we just need, that's something that we, in all seriousness, I do think that we need to think about that.
I might do a little research into the internet job sites and see, you know.
Is there any kind of state pools or anything, well, like you said, a couple other are looking for them too, and they're not having any luck, so.
Yeah, I know, like Hubbardton is looking, and one, one other place, but I can't remember where, so.
Well, Middletown was looking just not too long ago, right, did they hire somebody or not?
Not that I'm aware of.
Did Billy, did Billy Reed get done, or?
I don't know.
Thought he was a road foreman.
Polby was as well.
New business, Share the Warmth Event at the Meadowwee School, so that I'll see, that, you wanna just?
So all that was, um, so there was an event, Julie might be able to speak to it better than I, but there's an event at the Meadowwee School that's through the BRSU, and it's Share the Warmth, and it's a clothing drive, um, and an individual reached out to Sean Ruck to suit, to see if we could advertise through the town, and Sean was just seeking the support and permission of the select board to put it out in the news blast and on the website, um, and put it out like on the front page of the website and really highlight it, so I put it out to everybody in an email, but, um.
I can't see any reason why that's not a good idea. Anybody have any?
Okay, I figured everybody would be fine with it.
You could just, you could just tell them the consensus of the board was.
Okay.
That that's a great idea.
I'll do that.
Or that we ha, he has his permission, of course.
Okay. And then the town green request was from Monica.
Town green request, you guys wanna have a meet the candidate at the town green?
Our legislator does.
The, excuse me?
Our legislator.
Okay.
It's a meet and greet with our legislator, our current legislator. For half an hour, twelve to four thirty, could run a little longer, but, that's it.
We have no, no policy on that, it sounds like a great idea, so, absolutely have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're going town to town, and all the towns have no problem.
Right, the consensus of the board is, is fine, absolutely have it on the town green. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment. Frank?
I went up to their reception in Polley for, for Jonas.
Uh-huh.
Saturday, very well attended, and people were dropping off cards, they're recent, a sympathy card for the family, uh, you got it going out.
Right.
Thank you for thinking of that.
Now we wanna go in and have a discussion about some personnel issues?
Um, yep, employee relation, la, employee, sorry, labor relations agreements with employees.
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion, we go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.